Call the Cascade Township Planning Commission to order. Article one, record attendance. Everybody is present. Let's move to article two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual political and justice for all.
Welcome. Member, member Nord, or trustee Nordhug, yes, sir.
I want to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to have a public comment. We always have it at board meetings at the end as well. We have two public comment times. It's become quite popular. I think I'd like to extend that to the planning commission.
So after article eleven and before article twelve, you are recommending that we amend and add a article twelve and extend article thirteen. Can you make that motion?
I would like to make the motion that we add a public comment period to the end of our agenda.
I hear support.
We're keeping, we're one question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is this moving forward or tonight only?
I would like to keep it moving forward. That's what we do with the board.
And we're keeping the first, the first one as well. So we're just going to kind of mimic what the board is doing.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So just to clarify, before article, before the adjournment article, Brian, we would add a public comment. I want to make sure I understand your motion. That is.
Okay, and could I, could I?
Yes.
Just discussion here.
Yeah.
Not to draw this meeting out, but it would seem to me, maybe it makes, does it make more sense to have that? Before other business in case we want to discuss something that comes up in the public comment or?
I thought it was more for the public to be able to, if somebody wants to come and say a piece, they can say in the beginning if it's something ahead of time. But if somebody's here listening to the whole meeting, it gives them a chance at the very end to make a comma on something that was said. That's how I take it with the board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? I hear support. Of course, thank you. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Aries. Okay, let's move on. Actually, before we do, we had a member, Mr. Merlin resign since our last meeting and I wanted, he is in the audience and I wanted to thank him for his service on the planning commission. And while I wish you were on this side of the table, I'm glad that you are at the meeting still. So thank you for your service. Moving on to article three, approve the current agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I hear support? Support from member Rappin. Thank you. All those in favor.
Hi.
All those opposed? You, moving on to article four, does anybody have, would like to disclose a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to article five, approving the minutes from the January third meeting.
I would move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, member Rissy. Do I hear support?
Support.
Thank you, member Roxy. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Thank you. Article six, acknowledge any visitors who are wishing to speak. I don't believe we, we have a, we have a public hearing on article seven. So I'd ask if you are here to speak about anything other than that. You can speak now or you can speak at the end of the meeting. Both? What's that?
Or both.
Or both? I'd ask that you limit your comments. Five minutes. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Craig Merlin, six, three, 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 Thorn Hills Drive, Cascade. Before the substance of the meeting, I was just looking through the planning department annual report and would like to note a couple of things in it. It talks significantly about planning commission activity, including attendance. And I know there's something that Mr. Rissy is going to remember, Marissa is going to raise on that attendance chart. I question why the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals are part of the planning department annual report. The planning commission doesn't, is not part of the community development department. The planning community development department helps the planning commission as it, and also helps set matters up for the planning commission to review, obviously, as part of its activities. So in that sense, this is certainly better than it has been in the past. In the sense of suggesting that the commission is part is, sits under the planning department, but it hopefully does not lead anyone to that impression. And should be so stated, I would hope. Second thing I'd just like to note is I am glad the department vision, I think we're closer to it now than we were a year ago. That's at the bottom of that triangle that talks about creating public value and efficiency. But the Round Hill report would indicate there's still a fair ways to go. And then the final comment I would make is just, and I was talking to Brian about it a minute ago. When you get to plan unit developments in the pages at the back of it, he refers to Round Hill and the Patterson Ice Center, and it talks about preliminary and final, and it has no, no dates there. It doesn't say what happened. Does? It doesn't suggest whether preliminary and final were approved or not approved, or issues were taken in essence, it was sent back to the developer for further issues. So that chart leaves, if it goes up to the board seeing that they are without any real kind of what happened in any real context in either one of those. And I happen to know the one was, they both received a fair amount of questions at the time.
So I'll head say. Thank you. I concur that the, the summary, Brian, is summarizes more than I, I would like. And so if we can met next year, add some additional detail, I think Mr. Merlin brings up a very valid point and I have to write a report as well. So perhaps I might call on you to help me write it, Mr. Merlin, with some additional detail. So, but Brian, I think if we do that, I think we'll both do the township a service. So excellent. Do we have any other visitors that wish to speak? Do we have, thank you. Do we have any visitors on the line that would like to speak? Who do like to speak? We have a So we do have a public hearing slated for that. So you're more than welcome to speak then. Yep. Yeah, no problem. Okay, moving on to article seven, case two, one, dash, three, six, eight, one, Patterson Ice Center LLC. And I see this is public hearing, so there will be an opportunity.
All right. So the applicant is requesting a preliminary plan review to amend the existing PUD, to remove a number of existing use and development restrictions that are in place. The applicant's requesting a total of 12 amendments to the PUD as shown in their narrative that's included in your packet. And those requests focus on increasing the allowed capacity of the project, removing restrictions on what groups and teams can use the facilities, allowing the sale of alcohol on the premise. We held the basic plan interview for this request back at our November 15 meeting, and the applicant's now providing the information that was requested at that meeting. Included in your pack is a parking space comparison provided by the applicant for a few ice centers in the area. The three other locations that have two ice sheets, which is similar to Patterson, have an average of 364 parking spaces, while the Patterson Ice Center has 391 spaces showing on their plan. I also included in your packet a list from Deputy Omar Diappa of the Kent County Sheriff's Department, which shows the calls that the sheriff department has responded to at the ice center in the last five years. While there are 32 calls shown, Deputy Diappa stated that none were directly related to how the ice center was operated. A number of calls were for incidences such as traffic stops that just happened to occur at that property. So they were tagged with that address. Deputy Diappa did stated that the sheriff's department has not had an issue with the ice center. What were his words on that? And the only change that was made to the applicant's request from that initial review was that the request was about the requested building occupancy. So originally, the applicant requested that the building occupancy and threshold for what is considered a specialty event be increased to 2,000 people. The applicant met with myself as well as the township fire marshal and one of our building inspectors to determine the actual occupancy load for the building per code. The applicant provided revised occupant load numbers that were reviewed by, reviewed and approved by the fire marshal and the building inspector. And it demonstrated that the occupant load is 1,640 people for the building. So the applicant has requested that the language in the PUD ordinance regarding building occupancy and threshold for what is considered a special event be changed to reflect that new number of 1,640 people. If the planning commission provides preliminary plan approval, then staff would draft the amendments to the PUD ordinance and bring those back to you for a final recommendation to the township board. At this time, staff are recommending approval of the preliminary plan as requested.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would the applicant like to speak? And your name and either your address or who you're with.
So I'm Chuck Hoyt and with Naderfeld, we assisted the, the two fellows behind me with the application for the, the PUD amendment. So I'll just say a few things and they'll be here to answer some sort of operational questions as well. And Brian did a good job of summarizing the revisions that we're requesting. Like he said, we did meet with the building inspector and the fire marshal and made that, that occupancy revision that we think is, is appropriate. And they did as well. So we were happy about that. The bulk of the requests, right, is consistent actually with basically 30 years of operation that Patterson has, has undergone. The Patterson Ice Center, they've been operating under, under these sort of same guidelines that, that are presented before you, and they wanted to bring the PUD back up to how their operations have been. You know, there's a misunderstanding or, or it's sort of encroached over the years to allowing different uses, but, but it hasn't been an issue as, as you've seen. But they want to make sure that they're consistent with that. I did notice that the, in, in the, the notes from 1994, the staff person recommended those restrictions. But then also did mention that an amendment could be made in the future to add things like semi-pro hockey or, or further uses. So this is sort of seems within the guise of what was anticipated for this, maybe it just took a little longer than it should have, but here we are. Patterson Street has been improved. That happened quite a long time ago. But it seemed like from 1994, that was kind of the, one of the major sticking points as to why they wanted to restrict some of the uses on the site. It's because Patterson was really just kind of a two-lane road. But now that that's been improved, it seems like that was a major hurdle that was overcome quite a long time ago. And, and you know, we should be able to sort of increase some of the intensity of use is what we're requesting to do. As, as the sheriff's department indicated, there's been no incidents over the years in relation to, to the ice center. And I think that's a testament to the operations of the applicants. They, they run a, a good operation there. They've been an asset to the community and they're going to continue to do so over the years. So again, bulk of the request is, is consistent with how their operations have been going. You know, the, the major difference, I guess we'd say is, is the request for the allowance of alcohol sales. Just, you know, to, to sort of put a fine point on it. You know, the planning commission should understand that all of their staff and management will be trained in alcohol service. This is alcohol service for adults only. It's strange that I would have to say that, but I remember when we were back here a few months ago, there was, there was talk about teenagers and that sort of thing. We want to be very clear that this is for adults only. This is an added amenity for an existing service, right? This is first and foremost, a hockey rink and the alcohol service is an added amenity. I think last time I was here, I used the example of a movie theater that happens to serve beer and wine. This is the same sort of thing. The intent is not for it to be a destination, to be a party spot, to be a nightclub or anything like that. It's first and foremost, an ice rink that happens to have that added amenity as alcohol service. And the idea was that, that it, it would then not require folks to go next door, which is, it sounds like is what they typically do is they go next door and then they come back over and you know, watch the end of the game or the practice or whatever. This is something to just keep it in-house a little bit. Obviously, everyone will be IDed. It will be a very professional service, just like what Patterson has been over these many years. An asset to the community, a well-run operation and responsible owners. So now the applicant is here, they can answer any questions. I can try to help out as well, unless they want to add anything else, you can just fire away some questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple.
Yes.
So we're talking about 1,600 capacity for the facility now, 1,640, I think it was.
1,640 is what we calculated.
How many parking spaces are there?
391.
Okay, so that's about one in four or four people per car roughly.
Sounds right.
Okay. Okay. The other question is, you say alcohol, you're talking strictly beer and wine, no hard alcohol?
I, I believe that license is a full license, right? It allows for spirits as well.
A private party thing.
They might want to state your name.
I'm Tom Manny, general manager at Patterson Ice Center. We would only do hard alcohol for certain events like a wedding reception, stuff like that, which doesn't happen very often. Or it won't happen very often.
But you have the ability, if you want to change your mind with the license you have to serve it at any time.
Right, but I, I don't think that the hard alcohol and hockey would go well. So, you know, I just, we, we want it to be as simple as possible.
So I'm, no, I'm just a new guy. I mean, a couple of notes here, but by my math, and the number I got was 1,564 seats and 391 spaces. So I mean, I think that number is probably a little more appropriate than the 1,640. The other question I would have would be, will you be selling alcohol during high school games?
No, I, we would have to see what the rules are on that. I don't, we're not going to allow alcohol in the stands, you know, at a high school game.
So is it going to be like i- in a designated area? You can't leave that area with the alcohol?
Right, as well, you, you tell me your name. Kevin Wood, Facilities Manager. The other facilities that have a beer and wine license, they stop. You can't take the beer and wine into the arena, but you can still buy it at the concession stand and drink it outside the arena. So it would be at that point discussing with the schools.
I think that's an MHSA thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The capacity of 1,640, if I'm not mistaken, did that number come from the fire department or is that a number that you guys arrived at? So we discussed with the fire department and the building inspector, the criteria that we were to use. Basically, the code section that they wanted to use based on square footage. So that was discussed with them, how we were to calculate it. We just simply came up with a number based on the square footage and number of seats that we have in the stands. So we sort of came up with it together. They got, they guided us on what section of the code they wanted us to use though. And my understanding is from at least people in the community that I've talked to, there's currently no, excuse me, or haven't been any reports of parking problems there. And essentially what you guys are trying to do is, if I'm not mistaken, is lift the PUD up to the level of essentially what you've been doing and operationally. But as far as that capacity is concerned, have you been, I mean, what, have you been running a capacity that high at the 1,640 or are you typically down around the thousand mark?
No, our high school games are probably the busiest that we have, and we don't have 1,600 people at a high school.
Okay. The parking is somewhat of an issue at some of the busy high school games.
Right, if we have two.
It's a mess.
If we have two high school games that are back to back, people leaving and coming, that's, so we're going to try to do better on that. As far as get put in a space between two, like, big games. Normally, normal games, we can have three in a row and there's no problems. But if we have two big rivalry games, then it can, becomes an issue just coming and going. They have to wait for someone to leave to convert. We don't have enough parking to have two really big games going on at the same time.
And that makes sense because it was kind of a, a trying to get in while people are trying to get out in your circle in the parking lot, looking for a parking spot. So that, that does make sense.
And then the college games, they, they don't bring very many people at all.
So it seems like the biggest issue is around parking and capacity. So, and it also seems, if I'm correct in stating that you're trying to bring this PUD up to standard of what you've been operating at. So what, could you estimate what percentage of your events would even reach the capacity that we're discussing?
Yeah, I just, the high school game would be the, the biggest that we bring in.
And do those comprise like 50% of the activity at this?
Probably, probably be about 3% of our high school games are the rivalry games.
Okay. And then were any alternative parking arrangements discussed with any neighbors or what, what exists today as far as overflow?
I have talked to one building that busts up to us on the south, and he has like 50 spots there. And he said he'd be willing to allow us to use it and write a letter for you guys if we were to need it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think we talked about that last time.
We did talk about shared parking.
And I did talk to him since that last meeting.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I have one quick question. I noticed on the report from Naderfeld where it talks about, let's see, a special event is one that involves over 2,000 persons within the building and that number conflicts with staff comments number six. Where, where it mentions the 1,640. I just want to confirm those numbers.
Yeah, so the original application did state the 2,000, and that was the original request. There was a discrepancy too, even with some posted signage from the fire department from many years ago. So that was through, through discussions and through meetings with the fire department and the building inspector. We've now arrived at the 1,640. So we've reduced that request from the 2,000 down to 1,640.
Okay.
Another comment was made that you guys were comparing to other ice arenas that have beer and wine. Do they just have beer and wine licenses or do they have hard alcohol licenses as well?
There's one north of town that has beer and wine, and then there's one down in Kalamazoo that has full liquor. And they serve out of their concession stand. They do drinks and all at all times.
And then would you guys serve alcohol during college games?
I don't think that alcohol is allowed in the stands for college games either, so no. Well, I mean, we probably sell it, but not allow it into the stands.
Okay.
Yeah.
So regardless of what's going on, you wouldn't allow in the stands?
Right. Well, the, the high schools, I don't allow it, and the colleges don't allow it either, I believe, so.
What about the youth hockey? Like Graha has their, their youth hockey.
I mean, you go anywhere in the state that serves beer and wine and you go to a youth game and they, it's in the stands.
Okay.
I mean, I'm the secretary of the Michigan Amateur Hockey Association on a regular, and I mean, we get no reports of any issues from somebody drinking a beer or a glass of wine in the stands. It's not like it used to be. So.
So you will allow it, just not for high school and.
Correct. Those would be the two accept exemptions that I would say at this point would be Michigan High School Athletic Association stuff and the colleges.
I can make another quick comment too, just to put. So this is a print that shows the rank. This is how we calculated our 1,640. One thing I want to point out, see if I can see it this way, concession stand at this location here. When we calculated the, that capacity at 1,640, it's based on that viewing lounge of most 8,000 square feet, you know, here and it ends here at the concession stand. It doesn't include this whole lobby here. And the idea was that that, that sort of becomes an opportune place to sort of keep the liquor consumption, keep the alcohol consumption in, in this section here at the lounge area. So had we calculated this area, that, that number could have been larger, but we kept it down at 1,640, just so that concession stand sort of an actual area. Trusting Nordhug.
So in the viewing lounge area, are there going to be any tables or seating in there?
There is right now already existing tables in seating. And then along the, the windows, there's a table that you can stand at or sit at a high top. You know, you see the tables, you see someone sitting down on the table right there, but there, there's probably maybe 10, 12, 10, 12 picnic tables that can sit six people each. And then all along the windows, both, both rinks run parallel with each other and that viewing lounge is in between and it's all glass between them. So you can watch through that glass and there's a table, there's a high top basically along most of that window.
Were all of these tables in place when the fire inspector came through?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If nobody else has any other questions, I'd move to go to public hearing.
Support. Thank you, member Rappin. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We may, we may call you back for more questions. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to make a comment? Step forward. If you could give us your name and your address.
Bill Zolmer, and I'm recommending representing 4870 Burton Street. I didn't have a look at all this stuff beforehand, and so, and I don't hear real well. But just, I guess this is a comment. It sounds like there was a bunch of mission creep that, you know, nobody was really aware of. And I wonder if there's things in writing that say, you know, the drinks aren't going to create a creep out into the lobby. Or what was the other place I thought about drifting? Not. I guess some of it did seem like, well, the other places don't allow it in the stands, but does that mean it might not creep into the stands, the alcohol and stuff like that? I don't know if there's any way to say anything about that stuff, but apparently the usage is, has crept above what, whatever was approved last time. And I don't know if they're on the spot for having done that, or whether anybody even noticed, or whether they were, was any big deal. I don't, I don't know. And then what keeps that from going up another notch in the next period of time? So that's my comment.
Thank you very much. You know, most, is, is anybody on the line and is there anybody else? Yep. Nobody online? Thank you. Amber Merlin.
Just one question is these alcoholic beverages going to be able to be sold at any time the arena is open, whether or not the facilities, they may be used all the time, all day long, but are they, are we in essence, creating another bar in Cascade? That while it's in an ice rink, there need not be any other activities going on.
Would the applicant answer that briefly?
Our concession stand will only be open when there was stuff going on on the ice. We won't be serving beer and wine if we don't have anything going on.
You'd be okay to stipulating to that and whatever we approve?
Yeah, I mean, we have most, are the weekends, we have stuff going basically all day, but during the week, I mean, we don't start really until 3:30 in the afternoon.
No ice time, no concessions?
No, we have some ice time from college practices and stuff during the day, during the week.
Sure.
But we don't have really any people coming in until after five o'clock during the week. I mean, our concession stand doesn't open until five o'clock Monday through Thursday. And then on, on Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday and Sundays, it opens at, you know, eight in the morning.
Thank you. So anybody else? I'll allow it one more time. Go ahead.
From here, I'm just kind of wondering. You know, if that lounge area. You know, if that lounge area during a hockey game or something, but then afterwards, is there like a afterwards lounge will open? I mean, you know, a bunch of college kids play hockey for a while, then they want to go drink a few beers or something. So is that?
It sounds like they have posted hours. So I.
Posted hours.
They have posted hours.
That somebody holds them to that. I guess. Okay.
And that's the liquor control board that would absolutely hold them to that.
So that's not a concern.
Concerns me.
I was gonna say, yeah, and I know we keep talking about comparative ice arenas, but I knew, do know when you talk about the one in Kalamazoo. No college kids hang out there afterwards. They're ready to either go and do other things or find a different bar that has dollar pitchers or something. I mean, it's not. I've never, I've spent a lot of time in other arenas and I've never seen after games, people hanging out there, which I know, I know, but I'm, and again, I'm saying we are talking comparatively. We're not talking about this place specific, but I've never seen people hanging out afterwards.
Me neither. And I've been, I've been traveling with my.
Nobody stays afterwards and drinks.
You leave and go somewhere else to do that.
Mister Chairman, if there are no other public comments, I'd make a motion to end the public hearing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Uh, do I hear support? Thank you. Ralph. I hear all those who approve. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you. Oh, you oppose it? You're messing with me. Okay.
You know, I, I, yeah, I, I hear the comments and I read the notes and I thought about this and I, I guess from my perspective, I I think I, I can get behind this because I see this as a way for this facility to create a little bit more income and sustain itself. Obviously, ice is, is not something you find in a lot of areas. I don't skate myself, but I know that, that it's needed. And this is a helpful way to sustain it. The difficulty comes from the how should I put it? The PUD being missed for a number of years, I guess probably. And, and so there's a certain amount of, well, I, I feel that we need to be careful because I don't want to set the bar that, well, if you have a PUD and it says that you can only wear blue shirts and everybody starts wearing yellow shirts and nobody ever complains, then you can just come in and get it changed. And, and so I, that, that's kind of my concern. And I know that from what you originally requested till now, there had, since the last time we talked, you know, some of these numbers have revised down and there's been some, some compromise, you know, some adjustment there, I guess. But I, I guess that's my personal take so far, but I, I, I think I could support this. I just, I want to make sure we're thorough about it because I don't want to set a standard here that that's, that's my concern. Creative, maybe.
I would agree with that. You know, reading through all the notes and just being at the arena for so many years, I, I totally support what they're asking for. But that was, that was the one thing that kind of stuck in the back of my mind was if, if we let, you know, what, what's going to happen if we approve this, then what's not to say some other business doesn't do the same thing and say, well, let's just sneak this under the radar and wait 10 years and then go and ask to have these, our PUD amended. That's my only concern. I don't think it's enough for me to, to not approve this, but, but it is a concern. And I just hope that there's some kind of guarantee from the applicant that, that, you know, they're going to be a little more attentive to, to what, that what's in the PUD and, and the changes that if we approve them.
I would like to think that if, if they.
I'll let member Rappin go first. And if it's any solace, maybe it is, there isn't for me because I have the same concern. And I think the, what, what I read into this was that it didn't happen over the last two years. This has really been over the last nearly twenty years. So I can see where it was very easy to let things slip a little bit here, a little bit there. And I think the, the township may have, you know, if we had seen anything, would anybody have said anything over those twenty years? I think now it's probably a little bit different. And so for me, I just think both the timing of this happening now and this did evolve probably over many changes of staff, both township and at the ice rink. And I don't think we would see the same thing hopefully over the next twenty years. But having seen it in this case, hopefully we can all be more mindful of this and other developments.
I'm in order.
I'm okay with making some amendments to this because it did say that they could be amended in the future. The occupancy. If the fire department and the building department are good with bringing it to the sixteen forty, I guess I'm okay with bringing it to sixteen forty. My concern. The liquor. I'm, I'm again open to the beer and wine. But I think the liquor should stay as is with special use with the which hasn't been denied. But I think we should know when it's going to be a liquor event down there with and I don't know what number to put on it before it was was the twelve hundred or fifteen hundred or something of special use? And I'm just saying I, those are my concerns. I just I'm about halfway there with you.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you how the, just PUD, how that all happened. Um, we opened in Natora of ninety four and in the first four years, we went through five general managers. I mean, that was the life expectancy wasn't very long and I took over as general manager, I don't, fifteen years ago or so. And I never read the PUD. I don't even, didn't even know what a PUD was. And I was just going along with the way that we've been operating. The only reason that we found out that we were violating it was when we hired a lawyer to help us look for a beer and wine license. And he read through the PUD and he found it and brought it to our attention. It was no intention at all to, we didn't know that we were actually doing that.
Just a brief question about that. Like, how do you monitor how many people come into the building?
Well, we know how many seats are in one of the arenas.
Right. Right. I mean, but there could be people meandering up top. There could be people in the wherever the open area where you said you didn't count. So I mean, that's my question too, is I know things get out of hand, especially at some of these big high school rivalry. But how are you going to actually monitor people coming in to make sure you don't exceed this?
No, we've never been really close on monitoring that, but that's something that we can do.
Cause that, that's how I feel. I know you talk about management changes and all that, but I feel like there's no way to really tell. I feel like you're just getting, you know, people are paying as they come in and nobody's really paying attention. And we think we had two thousand people tonight, but we don't really know.
We have no problem with having a counter and I mean, we don't get the money for the people coming like as at the gate that high schools do. So we can make sure that there's a cutoff and that that doesn't exceed our numbers.
But I don't, I don't. Just for safety as well. I mean, with the fire marshal, you know, there's lots of reasons that your building has a max capacity.
Right. I'm not, I personally don't think, and we haven't counted, but it's gotten over twelve hundred people on that. You know, for a big event, like we've sold tickets to like an alumni game and we sold like so many, so many tickets and it looked pretty full, but it wasn't to that extent, but that was all on one side, you know, we have the two sides. And as far as the, the liquor, we'd be happy is to put it in writing or part of the PUD that it's not going to be sold unless it's a special function. And we're not going to advertise special functions. It's just a, you know, if we, we had an employee that wanted to have a reception there and we said no, you know, because of, or yes, but no alcohol, you know? And then we had another one ask and then we got a special beer license for the day, you know, before. I think we've had two or three requests for beer and wine for different events and they've all been approved and has gone real well.
Back to your question regarding tickets or numbers. Uh, since I've been back the last seven years, we had one event that was an ACHA hockey event. And it was a national tournament and we did wristbands and we kept track. I mean, I knew like when we were to keep, when we were to there, we just, that was it. So we kept track of it really, really close. So, because we were concerned about that.
And with the beer and wine license, we'll be able to bring in some more tournaments that we can't have now. There's some little bats funded tournaments that go to these other rings that do have that. And we've been approached many times for that. It'd just be a nice summertime weekend that we can fill that we normally wouldn't.
Well, that's the part I think I support the most is just, it's your business.
Right. We're not laughing all the way to the bank.
I mean, I get it a hundred percent. I just think, I agree with the liquor thing. The parking is, I understand what you're saying because I have been there in between where it's been a mass, a nightmare, but that and the capacity part.
I did just come back from the USA High Committee. It's down in Orlando. I was down there since Thursday. And that was brought up in our adult committee meetings that we had applied for a beer and wine license and they're like, good, we got a new place to put some tournaments. So, and when, when you're talking, it's forty teams. So it's hotels, it's local income.
And for the kids, I mean, it's hard having kids in sports to find places to have those events. I think it's an important piece of it, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yep.
If, if I may, Brian, does the does the PUD amendment specifically address what area they can have alcohol in? Does it say the viewing lounge or, or the, I'm sorry, let me rephrase this. Does it say that it cannot be served in the lobby?
It really doesn't have any specifics. Right now, the PD ordinance just says alcohol sales are prohibited. So as they're, what they're requesting is that be struck from the PUD. So right now it's completely open. If there's any requirements, restrictions you'd like to put on it, now is the time to confirm that because at the next meeting is when I'll be writing the actual ordinance. So if you want to try to write in, there shouldn't be sold there or if there's no liquor during, you know, games or something like that. And now's the time where we need to decide that and I'll work with the applicants on writing that into the beauty amendment for the next meeting.
And the other thing that they mentioned was the, the, you know, that's mentioned in here is we're removing the, the requirement of security, which based on the, the record here from the sheriff's department and the township of not having any complaints, I'm not opposed to that. But do we want to perhaps if they're, if we were to, I'm just speculating that whenever we approve might, whatever our recommendation is to Brian to be drafted in, I'm, I'm speculating that it's going to say something along the lines that liquor will only be allowed at special events. And if that's the case, is there a, a attendance triggered where we might want to?
I don't, I don't know.
Put that in?
I think a lot of them were.
Well, if it's a special, they can come in and get a permit for that.
Yep. So special events are defined in the ordinance as any event that would exceed a attendance of the sixteen hundred forty number. So when you say special event, that's what it means in terms of this PUD. So if you're just saying, you know, a special event is in a wedding, as we worded slightly differently. So it's not meaning so the special event that's defined in the ordinance.
Right. It's certain, it has to be triggered by like a non-ice event. I mean, you know, something like that where it's not open to the public or it's like a wedding or something like that.
I think is what kind of the discussion has been.
Private event.
Yep. Private event or something like that.
I have a couple of thoughts. One, when I came in here, I was nah, liquor, hockey, never a good mix. I mean, I've but you've got me on the camp on the beer and wine, but like you said, I, I'm not sure about the liquor, right? And maybe that's something we can revisit a couple of years down the road if everything is smooth. I think that a special permit for special events where you can serve liquor, I think there's still that opportunity. So you, you've got me leaning towards you on that one. The capacity bothers me. Hey, I mean, it's, it says in the zoning ordinance, you know, one parking spot for every four seats. That number is fifteen sixty-four based on their parking.
And it also says that if capacity is extended in the future, the parking would be revisited with additional spots. I think it does say.
And I have no problem supporting the fifteen sixty-four. And it's not, I mean, you're talking a hundred and they, and they obviously don't go up that high, right? But my concern is if we make this exception here, it opens the gates for other businesses to come and say, well, you made an exception at the ice arena. You need to make an exception for us. And so it really kind of throws out the whole, the zoning.
Mister, you, you had me with that one as well on the parking restriction, which is why I asked about the agreement with the neighbor. If they were to get those fifty parking spaces from the neighbor, then that brings them into compliance with the sixteen forties.
Okay.
Because sixteen fourteen, I think, still a little short, but they're pretty close. I bet they could park an extra few cars in there somewhere.
Does anybody want to take a crack at the recommendation for?
Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm working on it, but I'm still listening.
So I, I know we have a problem with, we have to be really careful how we define special because that's going to come back to us at some point. And then do we want to keep that as attendance number related? So any event over five hundred or?
The attendance number, sorry to interrupt, is already to me is a dead stop because it is the fire marshal. And I mean, that to me, that is like, this is your capacity that's safe in the building. I don't think that that should be a defining characteristic. I think that's a hard stop. Like once you.
And I'm not suggesting that's over sixteen forty. I'm saying, do we, and I'm not proposing this. I'm, I'm asking just so I know where we are. If we were to pick a number like five hundred, any, any attendance over five hundred is when we cut liquor off. We consider that something? Or is it any event that is like a private reservation? Because I worry that if it's called a private reservation, what triggers that? If Kentwood High School reserves the space, is that not a private?
Yeah, but there's only one other place here that has beer and wine, the one that has liquor is down in Kalamazoo. So I mean, we're, we're not, I mean, we're putting them on an even playing field. Let's see how it goes. And if it goes well, then we can add the liquor later. I just, I get nervous kind of throwing everything out there.
I have a question from.
Just real quick, trusting order to have his hand up patiently. I want to call on people.
Question for the applicant. You were saying that the beer and wine opens up all these new events for you, the liquor.
The liquor does.
Yeah. But it'd be a favorite of special private events.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like special events that I said, like a wedding reception. So we can have that in beer and wine too.
Right. But I mean, just private events, I'd be okay with.
That's just my question. I guess maybe for Brian, I don't know, wants to answer, can answer. How hard is it to get a special permit? If they wanted to do, so let's say they do ten special private, they do ten special events where they have a wedding or something. Can they get a special license for liquor to serve during those events only?
I think they could. And so what, what was done in the past is anything over that occupancy number required a special event on which is permission from the Cascade Township Board and the Fire Marshal. So they had to bring it and have it approved by the board. That was anything that exceeded that occupancy number. If we want it to be something like, if liquor is going to be served, they need that special event, then they need to bring something to the township board every time for improvement for that.
Yep. Thank you. Member Ressi.
Brian, if we wrote into the PUD that they could serve liquor, liquor at, at a special event with the, with authorization or review of staff or something prior to the event, would that not work then? I mean, as long as we're not changing the rules as far as the, the capacity of the building or anything, but if they say, hey, we're going to have a wedding reception in July and we want to save, serve liquor at that, they could, I mean, if we had it in the PUD that they could do that, if they talk to you, if, if they get your approval first or somebody, maybe it's us. Maybe it's a special use permit from us, but I mean, wouldn't that, wouldn't that work as opposed to having them go to the township board and go through that process?
We just went through staff heaven.
I was just going to say the same thing.
But this is specific to this PUD and it's written right in. No, that wasn't written into the other one. That's the ordinance, two different things, but, but I'm just, I, I'm you know, I'm not talking about changing the ordinance. I'm talking about this specific situation because it seems what I'm hearing is that everybody's okay with it at a special event that they're asking for permission from. I'm just saying, maybe we make it a little easier for them to get that permission as opposed to having to wait for a township board meeting.
Easy to do. We meet twice a month.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's a good. Folks, 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 let's, let's, I want to like, real quick, please raise your hand if you, if you have a question, not saying really out new guy, but you know. But remember Rappin, go ahead.
It, it sounds like we may have more to think about this liquor, the liquor than they may be asking. So I want to be careful that we're not over complicating this. And I'm not opposed to having liquor generally with these, with some stipulations, but do we? Can we ask them, does it? I'm curious what they think, what, what would to them would be satisfactory to include because they may not. satisfactory to include because they may not want it for more than just special private events. Like I've heard said, and if that's the case, maybe that's the recommendation.
Does the applicant wish to, do you have a, you you hear our concerns?
Yes, I do. I hear concerns.
You have an offer for us?
We're not going to actively look for any of these private um nights or receptions or anything. Just every once in a while, one comes along. We're not planning on selling. We don't want to sell it there, you know. But if for something like that, you know, if we had to to get that event, you know, and uh we would like to, but if we if not, I'm beer and wines like what we really like.
Thank you. So for me, it seems like we could cap it as something like, you know, no more than six times per year or by only with permission of the board. I know you meet regularly. That seems fine. It's not, well, that might be, a bit of it doesn't seem like it would be any
I agree.
detriment to your operation.
No.
Any any other questions or discussion points? Uh, the public hearings closed. I'm sorry, sir. Um, is there any other discussion? Does somebody want to take a crack at this? And and sir, this is a preliminary plan review. This will come back to us. So there'll be plenty of opportunity to speak uh after and before we do a final approval. Does anybody want to take a crack at the recommendation?
I think I'm gonna probably. Mr. Chairman, regarding Article seven, the Patterson Ice Center, I would move to approve the preliminary plan amendment with uh the uh, let's see, well, and I would I would uh go with the staff's recommendations, except uh I would like language that specifies that the that uh alcoholic beverages can only be served in the viewing lounge area. So that there's uh specific, or no way, I don't want to say it that way because that.
It's not in the lobby.
Yes, they they cannot be served in the lobby. Thank you. And they may not be in the um in the arena areas for high school and college games. Right? Is that what we?
Don't want them outside here.
Yep. And then uh as far as liquor, uh, this is where it gets tricky. Uh. I could go either way on this. I would, I would say um that events uh where they wish to serve liquor uh need to be approved prior by the township board. And uh that these rules could be revisited after a period of two years. And that would be my uh if if they choose to, if if they if they choose to, um, but that would, that's my uh I think that's everything I had on here.
Okay, I hear support from member Gorsuch. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll make on uh Article eight, case number twenty-one dash three, six, eight, eight Chick-fil-A. This is a site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I probably should have disclosed in Article four, but I do eat at Chick-fil-A on a regular basis.
Would anybody like to question that as a conflict?
I said, I don't believe it's a conflict, but I did want to disclose.
We can.
Thank you.
I feel like we've seen this before, have we not, Brian?
We have. Um, we're very close to it at least. So the applicant requested site plan approval for a four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through. Um, the restaurant would be located on an outlet in front of the Meyer store on Twenty-Eighth Street, just east of I ninety-six. That was formerly the location of Macaroni Grill. Uh, this project was originally approved back in two thousand nineteen as part of a PUD amendment to the Meyer Romano PUD. Uh, so there were changes to the PUD ordinance to allow for the drive-through service, and that also spoke to parking setbacks and signage requirements. Since it's been over one year since approval was given and no action was taken, approval of the site plan has expired, and that's why they're back in front of you tonight. I do want to note that when I was reviewing the case, I found that the applicant had not recorded that PUD amendment that was approved in two thousand nineteen, so they would need to record that document at the Kent County Register of Deeds before a building permit could be issued. Uh, the site plan is very similar to what was approved in two thousand nineteen with some reconfiguration of the parking lot and also some increased stacking space in the drive-through lanes. There are still a few, couple of items that need to be looked at here. Um, as I mentioned in the staff report, the detached ordering canopy on the south side of the site over part of the drive-through lanes there is shown to be extended to a consumer's power company easement. The applicants indicated they are working with consumers to release that easement. Uh, so they either need to provide evidence that the easement has been released or move the canopy out of that easement before a building permit could be issued. Uh, one other thing to look at here is the size of the building has been increased from four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square feet to four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square feet. So an increase of nine square feet. Typically, this wouldn't be any issue at all or worth mentioning, but it was written specifically into the PUD ordinance of the restaurant being that four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square feet. Um, you know, typically we try to avoid including specific square footage numbers for that very reason because it can uh create issues down the road here. Um, I told the applicant, the simplest fix would be just to reduce the building. So it's that same size. Um, they said that this new square footage is what they use for their standard restaurant building. So they didn't want to bring it forward here. Um, I talked to them about being the the increase there. It's obviously not changing the site plan in any way. Um, you know, and increase that small could also be attributed even to rounding error and how you're um calculating square footage. But I did tell them that ultimately the planning commission would have to determine if they're seeing that as an issue or not, since it was specifically written into the PUD ordinance. Uh, if you do view it as an issue, um, the applicant would either need to reduce the size of the building so that it does not exceed four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square feet. Or they would have to go through the PUD amendment process to amend the ordinance to allow for a four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square foot building. Just a couple of other items on the site plan. The township engineer reviewed and approved the plans. The applicant will need to record a storm order maintenance agreement with the township. Our engineer did note that the applicant will need to receive approval and a permit from the drain commissioner's office. Um, and the applicant has sent the record information, information to the drain commissioner's office at this time. Uh, once again, that's an approval and permit I need to get before a building permit can be issued. The township fire department has also reviewed and approved the plans. Um, the applicant did also include a comprehensive landscape plan, although it did include a few um tree species there that are on our uncredited species list. So some of that can be fragile or uh dropped fruit or things like that. We don't want to see way of illness like that. So we'll have to revise that plan to remove those species. Um, and then staff are recommending that a landscape bond and the amount of nine thousand dollars also be provided. Uh, the applicant did provide a revised photometric plan just earlier today that does meet our regulations. So with that, staff are recommending approval of the site plan with the conditions that I have listed in your staff report.
Any questions for Brian? Yes, member Rissy and then member Nordhug.
Brian, with this issue about the nine square feet, uh, if I did my math right, uh, do we, I mean, if if the applicant hasn't recorded the PUD yet with the county, isn't it a pretty simple process to amend the number on that uh document? Uh, I mean, the township board would have to approve that too, but uh, it seems to me that there wouldn't be much tilled and just changing the square footage, would there?
They have to go through the PUD amendment process still the, because that amendment was approved by the planning commission and the township board and also published. There's a final step they need to record the document. So this would stuff to go through that full PUD amendment process, which is obviously lengthier than just a site plan review. Um, if you see that as being a conflict of being, you know, nine additional square feet from what was written into the PUD organs back then. So it wouldn't be, you know, something I could go in and change with just a word from the planning commission, I think we'd have to go through a full PUD amendment process if we're seeing that as something that needs to be changed.
My question is more of the entire PUD, the Meyer development there. It looks to me like there's only four driveway cuts out to Craft and Twenty-Eighth Street.
Believe so, two on the south side and then two on Craft, I believe.
Yeah, just um at the Myers on Twenty-Eighth and Kalamazoo, just the Meyer store has five driveway cuts with no gas station. This one has the Meyer with a gas station, with a cell phone store, with a bank, with two hotels, with various other buildings and businesses. I don't know, we have another driveway test. Then when you put this traffic on top of that, this is a very successful, busy restaurant. I'm a little concerned about driveway cuts.
There are five.
That's what the Meyer all by itself has at Twenty-Eighth and Kalamazoo.
There there are five ways to enter and exit that PUD.
The whole one.
That's correct. You have one, two, three, four, five.
One of those, you can only go in one way, though, I think.
I think you can only enter and exit one way. Yes, but the point is there's there's five curb cuts.
So that's my question. Is there a possibility of getting another cut uh would be between the Chick-fil-A and the Meyer gas station? Would run north, south and come out on the Twenty-Eighth Street, maybe a right turn only, or so you would only be able to go west. But allow a lot more cars out of that whole development. I know we have to, it's a road commission in here. We gotta get everybody involved, but we're packing a lot of stuff in a small area.
Yeah, and I think the highway right away is right next. So I don't know if there is room on that location.
They'd be about three hundred and twenty to three hundred and forty feet.
I think right there it does. There's two lanes, I think, on the right at that point that actually go right onto the highway. So I think you would have to come out. You'd have to cross over two lanes to get into a normal straightaway lane is probably why they have everybody coming out where they do.
And even before you get to those two lanes, you'd have to cross over two lanes of backed up uh drive-through traffic.
Right. You would have to redesign the whole site.
Yeah.
I don't think it's appropriate to, in my opinion, to go um that route for something that we just approved in twenty nineteen.
And did the road commissioner approve it? I mean, they they clearly approved the plan both times, correct?
Yeah, or.
It would have the PUD for sure.
I would think so. I mean, this didn't include a new curb cuts. I don't know how detailed their review would have been of it at that time.
Can we request that they do?
I think when you come off the top here, that would be out under that main that that street. You would come down a new street between the Chick-fil-A and so all this stuff would be inside their lot.
Well, what do you, can you use your pointer to tell me what you're thinking here?
I know I can.
So you're saying at the top of this, top of the picture here?
Yeah, there's two driveway cuts going out onto the street there.
No, these are going out into into and this, you're talking this one and this one?
Yeah.
Okay, those are going out to the Meyer store.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
So it would come down to the right side of that, outside of the Chick-fil-A property, but between the Meyer gas station and Chick-fil-A.
Are you saying in here you want to?
Yeah.
Well, there's already a uh.
Well.
I I'm going back to the aerial image here.
Look at this one.
Yeah, that's the Meyer gas station is right next.
Right alongside that.
Well, you can't do that though, because then you'd be coming out to Twenty-Eighth Street, as I think Wendy mentioned. You'd be crossing those those two lanes. But Brian, is it, is it a hundred and seventy-five feet apart that the county approves uh curb cuts or is it? I thought it was three hundred feet apart is what.
I think it also depends on the speed limit of the road.
Steve used to say, I thought.
Higher the speed limit, the wider the farther the distance between the curb cuts.
Okay.
I'd have to double check the.
Yeah, we should double check that number.
I would have to assume, which maybe I'm wrong, but with the gas station right there, I think there is a reason why they don't allow cars to come out anywhere else except that one curb cut that is there. I think there's a reason for it, and it is to funnel all the traffic out of there and get everybody out at once. Other words, I would be harder, I think.
You know, I I tell me, I'm not going to disagree that I've experienced uh next at lunch over there, but it's almost always uh people going, trying to exit the wrong way. I think if if people traveled further to the north and then exited onto Craft, it wouldn't be as much of a big deal. But when they tried to use that curb cut over there by Consumers Credit Union uh at twelve, you know, twenty-eight, yeah, it's it's an issue. Um. I guess.
Thought there's a lot of traffic going to be going in another on top of what is now. Should we hear from the app?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, any other questions for Brian? Is the applicant present? Does it come up? Name and who you're with, please.
Evening, Leslie Accardo. I'm with P A Group. I'm the civil engineer and representing Chick-fil-A. So regarding the traffic, we did um actually redesign the parking lot to also ensure that if we do have excessive stacking. I mean, right now, I think we have forty-four spots for stacking. If we do have more than that, we can actually loop them around the parking lot. So that's kind of why it's got a a looping pattern now as well. So the intent is to try to contain the traffic on the site.
Any other questions for the applicant or any questions for the applicant?
Do you know, when you figure uh stacking distance in the drive-through, uh, and how do you base the length of the vehicle? I mean.
It's a standard car length.
Standard car length. So I mean, do you know what that that is?
No, we have a template that we put.
Okay.
I think it's not.
Brian, do you know what that is?
I don't know from their standards.
I'm just curious because obviously if if you were in uh, you know, one part of the country, it might be, everybody's driving little compact cars and in Michigan, there's a lot of people driving extended cab pickup trucks and you know, you could probably fit two compact cars for a pickup. So I I'm just, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, any discussion?
Well, I I'm torn here because um we have a PUD that says the restaurant can be four hundred or four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square feet and they want four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square feet, which I have no problem going to the four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square feet. But my concern is sitting here and making an approval for something that the PUD says can't exist. I have, I have an issue with that. And so I I feel that they're um, you know, given the fact that this project was stalled due to the pandemic and everything, I I would like to, I really would like to see this happen, but I uh but I feel that maybe there's, there's got to be a way that we can uh amend this. It sounds like it would have to go through a uh public hearing process, be notified through notification and then ask to go to township board.
Yeah, the typical PUD, I mean, if that's the right one wants to go or they bring it down to that four nine eight eight number, they can shave nine square feet off.
Can the applicant shave nine square feet off?
I I know it sounds really simplistic, but they do have a prototype that they use everywhere across the country. The contractors go off of those plans. It's very standard bricks. I mean, bricks are measured and I mean, all kinds of things that are generated because of that. Um, so that would would not be something they would want to do. Um, so I I can't say no. I would say that one of the reasons it did change is because they removed the indoor playground. And that was a result of the change.
That that makes sense. And then do you have enough time in your process to go through a PUD?
This would definitely delay. I mean, the intent is to open the Chick-fil-A next year. If we have to go through the entire process, that definitely won't happen next year. It may happen near the end of next year. So it definitely delayed the opening.
Perfect. Thank you.
And next year, you mean twenty twenty?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. Yes.
Any other additional questions?
I have a couple of questions, but for Brian.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Um, the recommendations that you have laid out, do those include the SCFC permit? Would would that be included in number one?
That would be, because that's mentioned in the engineer's letter.
Okay. And then there's a, there are a lot of recommendations here. Who's going to confirm and sign off? Those recommendations have all been fulfilled.
I would.
Okay. And those all have to be done prior to starting construction. Is that correct?
I, yep, I believe everyone would have to be. Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Ryan, didn't I read somewhere that um the nine square feet could be considered rounding error?
That's kind of the thought in conversations with myself and the applicant, you know, how are you measuring? Are you measuring from wall to wall or like this or that? So I mean, it's the point was it it is a small number and it's not changing the site or how the site's being used. That's just kind of where that that thought came from. It's obviously the, you know, same building, same use, same number of parking spaces, things like that. Just know it's 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 a small increase, you know, it's not it's not changing anything else about the site, right? That small increase doesn't require them to have more parking or anything like that. It's it's nine, nine square feet of. It's, it's nine, nine square feet of space.
Who's comfortable with the nine square feet? Can somebody take a crack at this?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um. I guess, uh, prove the site plan review, uh, and include the staff recommendations.
I hear support. Thank you, Member Rappin'. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you. Hey, moving on to Article Nine, Brian, the twenty twenty-one Planning Department Annual Review.
So you included this in your packet here, review of kind of the activities from the planning department and the boards and commissions we assist with. Then it, it's a big help for our department to see what's gone on this year, how many, um, items have come to the planning commission, have come to the zoning board? How many administrative items there has been? So it definitely helps our department to look back on. We did have, um, seventy total requests come to our department, which is a bit of an increase from the past two years. Kind of getting back to close to where it was twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. So it was a busy, busy year there for the planning department. So. I know, is any questions or comments on the report? Be happy to hear them.
Any questions, Member Corshig?
I scrolled to there and I'm not there yet, so I'm just gonna say it without looking at it specifically. It's just the attendance numbers. It's just making note of when certain people were. Their timeframe on the commission, cuz I feel like it looks, oh, I went to ten meetings, but I didn't, I wasn't here the whole year. I just think putting something in there to note the timeframes or maybe in something like that.
Sure, I asked her, scan a little note or something like that.
Yeah, like. Certain times.
Absolutely, um, Member Rissy.
No, that was exactly where I was going. I, I think that, uh, we certainly need to designate, you know, cuz somebody would look at this and they. And they might say that gee, Members Slater or Member Johnson were hardly ever here. So I. I agree, there, there needs to be, um, a better, uh. And I, and I, I suppose this is more of a boilerplate form, and typically, we wouldn't have as much turnover on the planning commission as we've had this year. But there's been a lot of, a lot of changes, so somehow there needs to be a paragraph or something that designates. Uh, maybe you list everybody and, and the time that they served, and that would probably, that would probably help, uh. Minimize that. And then the other item I thought I had on here was. No, I think that, I think I covered it.
Vice Chair Moxley gets the award for the attendance of the year. So, well done, sir.
Be my one meeting.
Close call.
Yeah, more than, I'd like to further note that it's more than the previous chair. Awesome. All right, uh, any other comments or questions for Brian? All right, moving right along, uh, Article Ten, Old Business, I See None. Do I stand corrected? Moving on, uh, Article eleven, any other business? I listed something here before I go there. Ben cornered me, uh, at the last, uh, meeting and, um. Told me that Brian has identified email addresses for us. Did he forget to tell you this? They will be coming soon. Uh, but, but yes, he said that they were able to identify, uh, some extra email, um. Addresses that we could be used until we move to, uh, a different exchange server. All right, uh, moving on. To the trustee communication from the planning commission, I'll give a quick, uh, summary of what I was trying to accomplish with this. And I'm gonna read into the record a note that I got, uh, from, that, that both, uh, trustee Nordhook and I got from our supervisor. Um, but I, basically what I was just trying to say is, I, I'm trying to, um, be incredibly transparent this year. And anything that we send to the board, uh, I want it to be identified whether, you know, that it comes from the entire planning commission. And I attempted to do that. Um, but with that said, uh, it's my firm belief that our ex-official member from the board. Is trustee Nordhook, and he should be, uh, often preparing memos, maybe even every board meeting, um, of what we need. Uh, and providing that, uh, to the township board. And, and in fact, that's what he did. And so, uh, it was brought to my attention by, uh, Ben Swayze, our manager. And I just said, hey, I, I want to note that this is, this is what's from the planning commission. This is not and was not voted. Uh, perhaps it was used to come up with a result, which in the case of Round Hill, the notes that, uh. At the time, Member Merlin prepared certainly were to come up with our recommendations. Uh, my apologies, Member Rollins, this is all previous stuff. But, so I wanted to just really be clear that, you know, what we approve, uh, identifying that and what's not. Is not identified as being approved by the, the planning commission. So with that, I'll read this and see if there's any comments. Uh, Chris, regarding the above noted agenda item, I noted the following. First, trustee Nordhook is an ex-official member of the planning commissioner. In that role, he has additional responsibilities to serve as liaison between the planning commission and the township board. The correspondence apparently in question is quite clearly identified as being from trustee Nordhook to myself as township supervisor. And the entire board providing supplementary information he deemed relevant and in fact already public record. Second, the information provided by the Board of Trust, by, to the board, by trustee Nordhook supplements. Not conflicting, contradicting, or disputing the Round Hill Subcommittee's report recommendations. By providing detailed, specific, programmatic failures or deficiencies. Critical and practical information intended to assist the board as it proceeds to evaluate and implement the committee's recommendations. The Round Hill Subcommittee provided a valuable service to both the township board and the Cascade community. And I, along with many others, appreciate both the committee's hard work and the reasonable manner in which it proceeded. Trustee Nordhook's provision of supplementary information was likewise entirely appropriate and helpful. Please read this correspondence into the record, which I have now done. And, uh, I don't think anything I said was in conflict with what the supervisor was saying. And again, just to really bookend it, the only reason that I did it is I was asked by the manager. Do you approve putting this in the packet, which I would argue maybe he should, none, but, but he did. And so I said very specifically, uh, it's not my place to put it in or not put it in. I think you can all see the correspondence. This is what the planning commission approved. Um, Member Corshig, I think you had your hand up first and then, nope.
No, I mean, I did say. This is just me talking. I agree with everything you just said, that I do think that trustee Nordhook, it is part of his responsibility. To report to the board certain things and to give them updates and. Maybe I don't want this on record, but I'm gonna say it almost feels like manager Swayze was like tattling. It feels like it is just how I read it. When I read the, the email chain originally was like, what, it's clearly written from you to the board. And it is part of your job, I feel like, to do that. And so I agree with what you're saying, that we do wanna make sure everything that comes from the group is approved by the group. Period, new paragraph. My only comment, which is not about something he wrote, again, is about the memo. And I think we've talked about this at least two to three times at these meetings, that it is dated a November date. And it is very misleading to me that we did not see that memo until the December sixth meeting. That's my only part. And again, that was a period, new paragraph, had nothing to do with what he wrote. That's it.
Awesome. Go ahead, Mister, uh, Member Rissy, and then I know.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna say is that I thought that what the supervisor made the comment that it was entered into the public record. I'm not, I wasn't aware that this memo had actually been shared to the planning commission prior to this exchange. I could be mistaken, but I know Mister Merlin read excerpts from it at our November eighth meeting. But I don't believe that it was circulated amongst all of us.
The December sixth, whatever our special meeting, what day was that? Was that December sixth? December sixth, I think that was.
No, I, I, the special meeting, I think, was the fourteen.
Was the week after. That was the meeting that I think that we first saw it.
Okay.
That it was part, I think, of that packet for that meeting. That is the only thing.
I didn't think that it was, but I could be mistaken.
It was, cuz that's where I brought it up multiple times about the date on it, to me cannot. It, it is misleading to me that it's, was dated a certain day, a month before we were having a special meeting. That was my only piece.
Was it included in the public record or in the packet, Brian?
I don't believe that it was.
I think, or was it just passed out?
Was it passed out or was it in, that's why I wonder if it was entered?
I can check that right now, though.
So I don't, I see, I don't know that we put it into public record.
And that's my point, is that it specifically says in the email that it was in the public record.
And I'm saying, I don't believe that it was.
And I, I suspect unless she is on the line, that that was her understanding, and that could have in fact been. What I told her, that, uh, I understood that the majority of what, uh. Trustee Nordhook was presenting was in fact already in public records. So I'll fall on the sword for that one. Uh, trustee Nordhook, go ahead.
Well, I guess I just wanted to say that. End of the year, beginning of the year, change of the chairs and stuff. I did, uh, speak to Mister Rissy that I was going to put a cover letter together with a summary page. Didn't say that. And that was it, but the, uh, board turned down hearing that at their December meeting. So it kinda rolled over into January. I missed you. But, uh. Yeah, it's, I.
Everything that was in that, uh, subcommittee, those were all open to the public, but based on the Open Meetings Act, so everything in those committees.
Public information.
Right, but the problem is the last committee meeting was on, we had one in September tw- twenty. And then, and then we had the one in December, but the, but we didn't discuss the November eight document at that meeting. He drafted that after the meeting, hence the date November eight. And I think the three of us, I'm assuming made, I know I made comments directly to Member Merlin when he drafted that, which he included in it. I'm assuming you got, as members of the Round Hill Subcommittee, you also had interaction with him as he drafted it. But I, but we did not, um, the Round Hill Subcommittee did not have a chance to.
You did not approve your minutes is what I'm hearing you say. Is that accurate?
Can I maybe follow up to that? It sounds like that document was never in the minutes, so it was never approved by the subcommittee to be shared.
That's, that's my point. It was drafted after the meeting, cuz remember the plan was we were coming to all of you to present. Originally, we were going to present in October, and as chair, I pushed the meeting off, in part because, uh, we had a member that was, that I felt really wanted to be part of it. And he, you know, we didn't have anything else on the agenda, so we did, we skipped three meetings. We had a meeting in this room to prepare that presentation on September, yeah, September twenty, nine twenty. And then we didn't meet again until November eight, I believe. And, or right around then, as a planning commission. And so when we had the September twenty meeting, I had a list of items that we talked about. That I was going to present to the planning commission. And when we came, I started reading my, my items. And then Member Merlin had his document, which he started reading from also. And so we kind of tag teamed a little bit through that. But as far as specifically distributing that report and having it in the public record, it was not in the packet for December fourteen. Uh, and I'm looking to see if it was in the packet of the December sixth meeting, but I don't believe it was. But my, my point is, I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't want, is somebody to be watching or seeing these notes. That are mentioned now in the record, and then they go to look for it in the public record and they can't find it. We just had somebody at the last board meeting make mention of that. That they go to look for something and it's not there. That is extremely frustrating. So I'm just trying to be very clear that we don't mislead somebody.
So in, in point of fact, uh, again, I, I mentioned to the, uh, supervisor that it was in public record. This was my air, is now in fact in public record and is in the, for, for those who are looking for it and watching this recording. It would be found at the previous, the last board meeting that we had, uh, attached to trustee Nordhook's memo. And so therefore it is in fact in public record, Member Moxley.
Uh, I confirm what, uh, Scott has just said, that I do not recall seeing this memo dated November eighth. Until our December fourteenth meeting as planning commission group. And that evening, we were focused on not this, but on putting together a list of recommendations, which took us. Great part of the evening, as I recall, you know, to try to work everything out and word process all that. And I didn't even read this until after that meeting. And I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it. I think it's accurately done, but I never saw it before December fourteen.
Anybody have anything else?
We're missing three sets of minutes in our committee.
We are, and I was gonna address that under other business.
So, uh, I asked for guidance. Is everybody, uh, good with the approach that I'm taking? Where I'm gonna be very specific as to what this planning commission does and does not, uh, and, and I'll coordinate with you. Trustee Nordhook on any memos, you know, so that you and I don't overlap each other again, but I anticipate that we will. So, everybody's, yes, good.
Yes, and, and just, sorry, just to be clear, he, he can write what he needs.
Absolutely, he should. Yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying.
If it's from all of us, if it's from the planning commission, you will make sure that it's really.
Yeah, it would just be from me to the board.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Oh, no, no, no. Go ahead.
But that wasn't from you, that, that memo wasn't from you. So I just wanna be careful that, like, I don't just pass you something to get around our chair. To get to the board, cuz that, that seems like that's, that would be, and you could choose to do that, right?
No, I'm gonna make my reports based on what we do in committee or board.
But that specific document wasn't written by you, so if I, any one of us could.
Well, this, the letter was.
The cover letter was, but not the.
Not the memo.
Not, no, I didn't write the, that was just supporting documentation, because I had some problems on my board, or they didn't even wanna hear or see it. So I put my letter together with my recommendations, which were very similar to what was in there, but I put the other one there for. Backup documents, so they knew I wasn't just making it up. We have some problems on my board.
So maybe one recommendation that I will make and, and as chair insist on, anytime we review a document. Um, I'd like it to be added to the minutes. All right, and that this will prevent something like this, uh, from happening again. We were moving fast. We had a lot of data to go through and it was a long night, so. Yeah, that, that happened, that's that. I don't think that anybody's disputing the, the contents of the report. So, Member Rissy, go ahead.
Uh, when you mentioned that, if that specific document is already in the packet, does it really need to be in?
No, it isn't. In fact, it is in the minutes, because it's, we published.
Well, I just wanna be clear for the people that are doing the minutes, that they don't have to.
No, no, it's in the packet, that's fine, but if it's not in the packet, I'd like it to be included after in the minutes. I think, Brian, does that make sense to you?
That's.
I think so. Yeah, if it's. That would have solved the problem here, had the document submitted to the chair to be in the packet, then all of us.
There it is, right there. So please, uh, when we get the packets out, the Monday before is when Brian and I work on it before. The meeting happens, right, typically?
Yeah, you'd usually send you a draft agenda on Monday and try, ideally try to get the packet out by Wednesday.
So if you all can get me any documents that you'd like reviewed the Monday before.
We're good.
We can make sure that they're in the packet. If they do, in fact, have to come later for, for some reason of time or whatever, then I will give them to Brian. Please still submit them to me ahead. I'll get them to Brian to be added to the minutes. I think that solves it, uh, trustee Nord.
I just wanted to say that, you know, for this Patterson ice arena thing, I went to the longest-serving member on our board. Who was with, uh, served with Mister Lewis, who was on the planning commission. His name is in, in some of these documents today. I, and I reached out to him to get some information. What were the big things that, you know, it was the in-person back and forth? I never heard back from him. But that's what I'm saying is, even when we reach out to him, it's like.
Which is really frustrating after watching the board meeting, cuz. Multiple times I heard somebody state. Oh, yeah, I remember when that came to the planning commissioner. I remember when that came. It would be nice if we could all work together and we could get some information from people. As to things that have happened in the past, so we can get some more context around it, to know what really did happen.
So that's why I reached out to him, this, you know, just to say, you know, what was the conversation?
Right, right.
So we could work on it tonight, but I got no response.
Yes, Member Rissy, you said you had something else and.
As a matter of fact, I do.
Excellent.
Uh, so, the Round Hill Committee met last year and it doesn't have any more meetings scheduled. Uh, and we have minutes from September thirteen, September twenty and December ten. I believe I can come up with draft minutes for the last two meetings. Uh, September thirteen, I'll be honest, that's gonna be difficult for me to come up with, uh, minutes for that one. I could probably do it. But I thought maybe Member Merlin had those, so I. I have minutes prepared for the last two, cuz I took, I took copious notes. Uh, and actually, I shouldn't say that. Remember Moxley took copious notes in December ten. I took notes on September twenty, and I believe you took notes on September thirteen, so. So long story short, if, if you provide the thirteenth, I got the twentieth and the tenth covered with help from our vice chairman. But my question is, if I submit these draft minutes to be placed on the website, then do we? How do we want it? How do we, or do we need to have a, I guess what I'm looking at is do we have another Round Hill Committee meeting to approve the minutes? Or does the planning commission approve them? Or because I, I'm thinking about this, I'm like, well, at some point, the Round Hill Subcommittee is gonna have a final meeting. But then somebody's gonna have to approve the minutes of the final meeting.
The Round, the Round Hill Subcommittee is not in it, printed it, it's, it's report. So just submit the plant, the minutes to this planning commission and we'll approve them for you.
Okay, that's what I assume.
I don't think we can actually approve minutes that we weren't at.
Well, I think, I think we can approve them at the planning commission.
We can accept.
But we cannot approve.
Some discussion between us at this spot.
The three of, yes, and the three of you, if you can submit them and the three of you sign off on them.
Right.
We can then accept them.
Yes.
And that's, I guess that's why I wanted to make sure because I, I mean, I can send them to have them submitted to the website or have you do that, but I don't want to do that until we've.
Now let's.
I will collect everything and get it to you and, and we'll communicate on that process.
Excellent. As a, a point of fact with the Round Hill Subcommittee, as I mentioned, it, it, it's completed, it's, it's first step. We will, I'll be meeting with Brian and Ben to get their recommendations to form a new committee. To go to the next stage of this, which is, is starting to implement some of the recommendations that we've made. My ask for everybody in the planning commission is to consider, if you have interest in serving on that. I, I know one of you have already has approached me with interest. You know, we, we need to get to the magic number of four again, and so give that some consideration. And once I come back to you with a report, we can vote on, see if we have volunteers first and then vote on, we should be part of that committee.
I just have a clarifying question. Those meetings are during the day, is that correct usually? I mean, when?
Those meetings, whenever the Subcommittee chooses to have them.
But those will involve staff. They'll be, it, it's gonna be a larger.
I suspect it, it will be, but with that, I, I, because it's a Subcommittee, I think we can do Zoom. Can we not on a Subcommittee?
I would, yes, believe so.
Yeah, there's, there's some flexibility there if needed. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I know we had to vote to start the Round Hill Committee. Do we need to vote to dissolve the current Subcommittee? And we will form a new Subcommittee.
We, we voted for, we, we made a motion to form it to, is I, my parliamentarian skill says that we, we, we formed a committee to prepare a report. When it submitted that report to us, it concluded its job. Does anybody have, yes, Member Rissy?
The motion that approved the formation of the committee specifically stated that it, that it had till the end of the calendar year, which is now passed.
Thank you.
So there will be a new Subcommittee, but today we have no Subcommittees. Okay, does anybody else have any other business? Member Vice Chair Moxley.
Brian, can you give us an update on the zoning ban?
Yeah, they've been ordered from Cascade Printing. They're gonna send us one first, just to make sure it's, looks okay and then.
Kind of a test case.
Yeah, exactly. Just make sure nothing's wrong on it, but.
Thirty by forty-two roughly?
Yeah, a little small, yeah, roughly by that, based on the PDF. So they're working on that.
Nine of those coming.
Yep.
Eventually.
Eventually, yep. We'll get those, yeah.
Yeah, mine's twenty seventeen.
Even Manager Swayze wants to do it. He said that, that Ralph's was more up to date than his.
Excellent. Any other business? Yes, Brian?
A quick two items here. Manager Swayze informed me that the strategic planning consultants wanted to have a workshop with the planning commission. They were hoping to schedule that for our March seven meeting. So the two part questions of, does that work? Does people see that working for them? And then did you want to have that as part of or during the normal meeting or as a workshop prior to our regularly scheduled meeting? If anyone had any thoughts on that.
Anybody have a preference on this?
If it's an empty agenda, I think.
Yeah.
Fine, but there's a lot of stuff on that agenda.
I'm with you. I think that if there's stuff on the agenda, then it should be a separate with timeframes.
I concur. Super workshop.
Can you, can you tell them that we can, we'll, we'll do something, but can you? You'll probably have, by the time we have our next meeting, a much better idea with the March seventh agenda is shaping up to be, I suspect.
Yeah, or a little bit after that, but if we need to, it would, at six o'clock, you know, time work for people if we have a full agenda. And people coming an hour early for a workshop.
Work for everybody?
Yeah, I'll, like, I'll, I'll see how the agenda is looking closer to that. And then one other item, I did receive just a pamphlet from the Michigan Association of Planning on a number of classes that they offer for elected and appointed officials. So I am planning, I'll email that out to all of you. We do have some money in the budget for planning commission members, zoning board members attending some of those workshops. So I'll send that out and feel free to look it over. Let me know if you have any questions and if you're interested in any of those.
I would strongly encourage all of you to consider that. I know that Member Rissy, and I think, haven't you done one or two? Yeah, Vice Chair Moxley, yeah.
I've done some. They're incredibly up all. I think even just to go back for a primer would be.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good experience.
Great resource. Okay, moving on to the new Article twelve, public comment. Five minutes, Member Mer- or Mr. Merlin. One more time, just a quick name.
Craig Merlin, six, three, 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 Thorn Hills. Couple of things with regard to the Chick-fil-A. I keep hearing about prior to construction. One of the key problems in Round Hill, if one had looked at the underlying factual material. Was that construction was never defined. And so you already had significant damage to the roadie's property well prior to construction. If we mean actually building a building. We have to draft, or you guys have to draft ordinances more precisely. I would also, the timing of when that landscape bond has to occur should be precise. Again, Round Hill forgot to be precise on when the retaining wall needed to be built, all seven hundred and seventy-one feet of it. So that's just for future references, ordinances need to be more precise than they have been. The second comment I would make is with regard to things like how many people come to meetings. I guess we do have an enforcement officer, or we did at the township. And is that the person in charge of that? Because one of the other Round Hill findings was that. No one took responsibility. And in fact, the prior planning director said it was not his responsibility. To make sure that developments were built according to the ordinance that set them forth. So that there is a clear, we need enforcement, but we have a gap in who enforces. And when it shifts from the developer and the planning director to something else. The third comment I would make is that the Round Hill report. Was, as I hope everyone knows, it was a preliminary report when it was submitted here. And then it got all jumbled up in the supervisor wanting a copy of it quickly for some reason. So you are taking now as a final report, a preliminary report. I will have to go back and look at the minutes. I was, of course, out of commission for the month of October. So we had this report. The Round Hill Subcommittee met, looked at it. They suggested some language be changed to soften it in a couple of places, which I did. And as I recall, the Round Hill Subcommittee unanimously approved this November eighth report. Does, do any of the Round Hill Committee Subcommittee members?
I don't, I don't think we did.
I don't recall it.
Well, I, because on September twenty, I had a specific.
Twenty of it wasn't even done.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't meet prior, we didn't meet from September twenty to, was it December sixth?
No, we met in, we met before that.
I don't think we did, Craig. I, I'll look it up.
Because I recall a unanimously approved document. If none of the rest of you do, so be it. And by the way, whether. Trustee Nordhook put it into the record at the board meeting last week or not, I would have put it in the record if he had not. Because the recommendations that came from this committee lack context. Sufficient context, even though I will say Mr. Smoxley and Rizzi did an excellent job in trying to provide that with a couple of examples. The full, you have to read the report entirely to get a sense of the failure. Of the township governance on that project. It was horrendous, actually. And to answer a question that was asked of Mr. Smoxley and Rizzi. In my view, it was in part intentional because the provisions that were forgotten. Ie, the performance bond, the landscape bond, the site condominium, not being a site condominium, but a general condominium. All those things and the retaining walls, all those things were fought over by two sets of lawyers a year before. Now, we either have someone who is totally forgetful. But if I had to fight with two sets of law firms, I would have remembered it the next year when it came up again.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on the line that would like to make a public comment? What was that? Oh, I.
I, I know, I, I believe. Well, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're, you're referring to planning commission meetings. Yes, yes. Two in October, one in November, if I'm not mistaken. Correct. Right. Yep. And that was, yeah, that it was. Yeah. So the Subcommittee met August third, seventeen, twenty-fifth. And then September nine, thirteen and twenty, and then on December ten. That's what I thought. I think there was a meeting in July too, that's not on the website. But it could be our first, our first meeting that we had at the Township Hall is not at the website. But that was my understanding. But it, it's, I don't want to argue over.
Whenever this was written, obviously it was not on the Subcommittee, it's not a problem. But if there's a memo with a certain date, it implies that it was given to us on that date. And that is the problem I have was the date of it and to make sure it was part of public record. That's all I'm saying. The rest of it I wasn't part of, but I am saying that it's the date. The date implies that it was given to the planning commission on November eighth and it was not.
Any other, any other public comment? I don't believe so. Before we moved Article twelve, I just wanted to briefly thank staff. I know we're, we're keeping you here later and later. Y'all have families and I appreciate you continuing to serve and we absolutely all appreciate you. You're coming in and helping us out. Thank you.
Welcome to our new member.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, real, real quick, just thirty seconds on, on you.
Yeah, so I've lived in Cascade since I was five years old. My mom was a township trustee.
Very cool.
So I've been on the Parks Committee for about ten years. I've got two kids, a junior and a sophomore at Forest Central. Rangers and I graduated from Central and I went to Pine Ridge and so.
Got a few of us here.
Yeah.
That came up.
Yeah.
So, awesome. Well, welcome. Very glad to have you and looking forward. What, what do you, what do you do for a living?
So I'm in, I work for Phillips Healthcare. I sell IT solutions to hospitals.
Okay, so a lot of IT people. We have four of us now.
Well, I'm just, I'm the sales guy.
Same.
We won't hold that against you.
Diners and the golf and that kind of stuff.
Awesome. Well, welcome. Really glad to have you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
All right, made by Member Rissy and wrapping support. Thank you. Have a good night, all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice job tonight, Chris.